I declare this special meeting of the Port Phillip City Council open and I welcome the members of the public who are here tonight. The city of Port Phillip respectfully acknowledges the eloquent Willam clan of the Boomwarrong. We pay our respects to their elders, both past and present. We acknowledge and uphold their traditional relationship to this land. I remind the gallery that council's meeting law, local law, requires that members of the gallery must not interject or take part in councillor debate. Any person's call to order may be requested to leave the chamber. At tonight's meeting, in the interest of the safety of the public, councillor and staff, councillor has varied the process for public question time. In fact, there is no public question time tonight.
There are no questions.
And there are no questions. Okay, we'll just move to the next point. Please note that all council meetings are live streamed to allow the community to watch and to listen to meetings in real time. In accordance with council's local law, this meeting cannot be separately filmed or audiotaped unless permission is granted by the mayor. In the unlikely event of an emergency evacuation, please follow instructions of the emergency warden. All right, we'll move to the agenda. Item one is apologies, and councillors, we're all here, well done. Item two, declarations of conflicts of interest. Does any councillor have a conflict in any matters that we're discussing tonight? I don't think so, no, good. Item three was presentation of reports. So, we have one report tonight on this special councillor agenda, and that's proposed additional delegations to the CEO. Councillors, there are no members of the public that will be speaking tonight, so I'll go straight to you. Councillors, do you have any questions? Councillor Pearl?
Just if I could get clarification on who's actually called the meeting this evening.
It was called by, oh, Mr Chick.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor.
The mayor has called this special meeting in accordance with section 84 of the Act.
Thank you, Mr Chick. Now, councillors, we have recently got this report, so I understand if we're sort of working through it on the way tonight. Maybe, Mr CEO, you could introduce it, or Ms Bennetts, and just talk to what we're suggesting here tonight.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I might just do a quick introduction. Clearly, we are in very fast-moving times. I have to say that I hope I don't have to use any of these delegations because it means that I've either got councillors self-isolating or sick, or I can't get you together in a safe way to make decisions in appropriate time, and it also means that the current state of emergency is escalating to the point where I'm having to make some very, very quick decisions, not a position I particularly want to be in. However, out of due regard to the rapidly changing infection rate, new guidelines being introduced weekly, I know there's another meeting tomorrow of the National Cabinet. I don't know if there are any further measures in the pipeline. Could be that on Friday, there are additional measures announced, and we will have to respond very quickly to those, hence the need for these delegations. I would say that I fully appreciate the need for governance of this city by the elected members of this city, and the provisions in here are emergency provisions in the event to fulfil that, I think, number-one imperative, which is to have the councillors make decisions for their community. But I'll ask Ms Bennetts to introduce the report.
Through you, Madam Mayor, the report for councillor's consideration covers three key areas. One, the one area is in the terrible circumstances that we weren't able to form a quorum of council and ensuring that very urgent business can continue to be dealt with. The second item is providing sufficient agility to respond to changes in public health, occupational health and safety requirements with respect to service levels of council, when decisions might need to be made quite quickly to either close a service or reduce a service for a particular point in time throughout the state of emergency declaration. The third part of the consideration for council tonight is with respect to planning delegations for the same reason. I would point out to councillors that in the case of the first two delegations, what is proposed for councillor's consideration limits that delegation only to the CEO, so that power couldn't be on delegated to any other member of staff. In the event that the CEO was also in isolation, or there were issues there, then those delegations would fall to the acting CEO, whoever that acting CEO happened to be. The intent would be prior to... there would be good engagement with councillors, and also requirement to report transparently to councillors, but also to members of the community in the event that those delegations were exercised. This approach, all councils are different. The city of Stonington, earlier this week, passed a recommendation relating to CEO delegations when a quorum of council couldn't be formed. And also, the city of Melbourne passed, I believe, earlier this week, a change to their delegation policy and a change to their procurement policy, indicating that with respect to emergency and extraordinary circumstances, that sections one, three, and four of their delegation policy didn't apply. Those relevant parts of the city of Melbourne policy are matters that must be referred to council, limitations on financial delegations, and compliance, or sorry, financial delegations are not included, but difficult issues and compliance with policy were.
Okay, thank you, Ms Bennetts, I think that's really clear. So, just, can I, so there's two situations where this may be enacted. One is where there's no quorum, and two, while there is a declared state of emergency. So, they're the two, they both have to be together in order for this to be enacted. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I might ask Mr Chick.
Through you, Madam Mayor, can we just perhaps give an example of a scenario, just so the council will understand how this might work? I think that would be a good example. Can I just ask you, Mr Chick or Ms Bennetts, let's say a childcare worker tested positive, and I was required to immediately close down that childcare centre in order all of the staff to self-isolate, how would this delegation work in that circumstance? I think that's a good way to provide an example.
Through you, Madam Mayor, in that circumstance, potentially, it's a bit of 3.4 and a bit of 3.5, but in essence, you'd be changing the service level of council and needing to do that immediately for health and safety reasons. With respect to urgent decisions under 3.5, it could be the urgent need to enter into a particular contract that couldn't wait until a quorum could reasonably be achieved. What the intention would be with respect to 3.5 would be that if a council meeting had been called and we weren't able to achieve quorum, we would look through the agenda for that meeting, and unless there was something that was absolutely pressing and couldn't wait, that meeting would be adjourned, or those items would be adjourned until such a time as quorum could be met. So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that, it would be a sort of blanket approach. It would only be used to ensure that absolutely critical business to the operations of the council could continue. There'd be no intent to try and progress major policy issues or matters that were highly contentious using part 3.5, if that helps.
Mrs Smith?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I would read 3.4 is, in that scenario, I would close a service and immediately notify council, and if I had time, I would ring councillors to advise them that I was doing that before I exercised that delegation. Is that how that would work?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, that's the intention.
Good. Councillor Brand?
Just wondering whether there isn't another, another circumstance where, that's a circumstance where we don't have to have a meeting to do that, so that's a different, you or we, that's a different sort of delegation that, that's already exists in a sense, doesn't it? No?
Through Ms Bennetts, through you, Madam Mayor, I'll ask Ms Bennetts, but I don't believe, I would, I could do it under my OHNS obligations for staff, so this is where it's a bit tricky.
My question's on something else. My, Madam Mayor?
Councillor Brand?
My question, my question is actually, I'm just thinking that there might be another circumstance where we couldn't meet together as councillors, which is, I mean, the one is because we're in isolation or whatever, another is, I can't remember what it was, but is there another possibility where we can't meet because it's deemed, because staff can't be there, because it's deemed dangerous, or all of the relevant staff are sick, or is that not another scenario?
So, your question is that council couldn't meet even though we're all available, they couldn't meet because the staff couldn't actually conduct the meeting for us, or minute the meeting, for example?
And how do we deal with that?
Yep.
Through you, Madam Mayor, council has a series of business continuity plans that it implements for scenarios like this. I'd have to say this scenario is pretty extreme in terms of business continuity plans. However, we are looking at for critical roles, such as governance, in isolating staff, so that if, into different locations, so that if one group of staff are impacted, then another group of staff can still continue that service and ensure the operations of council can continue as best as possible. You know, potentially, there's the, that could happen, but we are doing everything possible to ensure that we can continue to provide good service to council.
Thank you, councillor.
Oh.
Yes.
The question then is that the CEO would be deciding whether there could be a meeting or not, and he would decide there wasn't a meeting, and then he would be taking the, automatically then getting the delegation. So, in a sense, it could be precipitated by the CEO rather than by the councillors.
Okay, Mr CEO, are you able to address that point?
I'd rather Ms Bennetts.
Ms Bennetts? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I couldn't hear the question, your microphone wasn't on.
Into the microphone, please, and can lift it up over to you.
A situation like that could be precipitated by the CEO, not by, not by the councillors not being able to turn up, but it could actually be precipitated by the CEO, and then the CEO could turn, his delegation could be actually precipitated by himself, rather than by the failure of councils or the inability of councillors to do something.
Not quite sure, I fully understand the question.
Look, I'm just making it up, but the CEO could actually say, we haven't got the staff to have a meeting, therefore we won't have a meeting, therefore I'm delegated to do that. So, he could take the delegation into his own hands without the councillors, and the councillors would be quite ready to actually have the meeting. That's what I'm getting at.
They're extreme circumstances, but I suppose they're...
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying. Like I said, we are absolutely putting in solid business continuity plans, but it is extreme circumstances. I would be devastated if we had a situation where our staff weren't well enough or able to come in and support the good governance of council. Yeah, I couldn't give you a definitive, definitive answer on that, but certainly, what I can say is we're putting the best plans we can in place.
Councillor Bond?
Just tease that out a little bit more. It would be possible, if no staff member was available, all 875 were isolated for, for whatever reason, we then couldn't hold a council meeting. Is that an accurate summation?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, that's possible, but what I would say is that council is working with other, other local governments at the moment around sharing of resources, so that we can continue to keep key functions like governance and communication. So, we are looking at ways that we can share resources across local government to continue critical operations, but I think the CEO might wish to add to that.
Mr Smith?
Apologies for not addressing the meeting through you previously, Madam Mayor, and through you, Madam Mayor. If you had no staff to conduct a meeting, you would need, you would need at least one or two staff members, because your major decision would be to appoint a CEO. If you had no staff to conduct a meeting, you would have no one to implement any decisions. So, the only decision you could make would be to appoint a CEO to go and get you the staff so that you could get up and go again.
Thank you. Councillor Pearl?
We're in extreme times. Out of curiosity, if we couldn't get quorum for tonight's meeting, what avenue would officers take in terms of, under the Local Government Act, or through the local government minister to hold a meeting so council could make a decision?
Ms Bennetts?
Mr Chick? You should pull up a chair, Mr Chick.
The CEO can apply, can apply to the minister for an exemption where council can't maintain a quorum, for the reasons of if the councillors are absent because of conflicts of interest. That is the only reason in the Act.
Another question, Murray. In the event five councillors were away because of illness or isolation, what would be the decision-making processes? Would the decision then revert back to officers? Would the, the, the local government minister have to give us permission for the remainder to make decisions, or is it just no decision can be made at all?
Under, through you, Madam Mayor, under, under the Act, if you, five councillors are away and you couldn't form a quorum, then you couldn't hold the council meeting and you couldn't make decisions.
I get that. What would then be the follow-up process if five councillors were away for an extended period of time? Does the decision-making revert back to the officers, as happens in planning scenarios? Or can the local government minister call a meeting, force a meeting without quorum? That's in the Act as well?
There's nothing in the Act that says the decision-making powers revert back to staff. The only thing that staff can do are the delegated powers that they've got, and there's certain powers that they haven't got, and they couldn't do those irrespective of whether there's four councillors or three or two.
Yes, Councillor Bond?
There is a provision in the Act for the local government minister to call a meeting with those present, and give those present, even though they're below quorum, the ability to make the decision. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of that provision.
Thank you, Mr Chick. Okay, how are we going with questions? Councillor Gross?
Isn't it true, Mr Chick, that, I mean, the more likely scenario is that if we became dysfunctional, that they might appoint a municipal inspector to replace the council?
Or a monitor, yeah.
Yeah, or a monitor. That's what would happen if we became permanently, or for a period in quorate. That's one of the options open to the government, is to have a municipal inspector.
Mr Chick?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, I think that would be an option that could happen.
Thank you.
I've got a question around the definition of urgent decisions or critical decisions, as you also put it, Ms Bennetts. Can you just flesh that out, please, so we sort of have a clear understanding?
Through you, Madam Mayor, we would interpret urgent or critical to mean activities that would prevent the emergency operations of the council. So, as discussed previously, that, that may be entering into a contract, but it certainly wouldn't be progressing policy, policy work or activity like that, which quite rightly could wait until there was an ability to achieve a quorum of council. So, yeah, the intent would be merely to keep the operations of council underway, and certainly, we'd hope that it would never actually be used.
Thank you. Councillor Gross?
Going to, I just want to try and understand how the planning would operate. So, if the CEO, under the preconditions in the first clause, took power and then got to exercise those, that planning power, would you have a meeting like we have as a council, or would it be different, or don't we know and we'd make it up on the run, or?
Councillor Gross, do you mean with the community, a meeting with the community?
Yeah, so, so...
Consultation with the community?
Yeah, consultation, where there's speakers for and against, and all the stuff we do in our planning committee. Would you replicate that, or would you try and be a little bit more, look, these are difficult times, the CEO's delegate's going to give me a, a, a recommendation, and I'm going to follow that?
Ms Rozick?
Through you, Madam Mayor, under the Planning and Environment Act, to give you some context, the responsible authority can delegate its power, discretion, and functions to a committee of authority or an officer of that authority. So, the way that this has been written is the authority would sit with the CEO. The actual mechanics of it, we aren't outlined in this report, but the, but the, the most pertinent information is that the CEO would have full delegation. At the moment, some matters are delegated to various council CEO and through the CEO to council offices, such as the manager of, of planning for the city of Port Phillip, Mr George Borg, and other matters are required to go to the planning committee meeting, which is held monthly. If council endorsed this recommendation, all those items listed in 3.2 and 3.3, which currently do go to the planning committee meeting, the CEO, if there wasn't a quorum, would be able to be the deciding body and make the decision.
Could, could I just ask a question of the officers through you, Madam Mayor? Given these are pretty extraordinary times, should we try to raise the number from 16 to more than 16, so that officers just deal with it with more applications in the normal run of business?
Mr Borg?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the intention really of 3.2.1 is to have no limitations.
Sorry, no?
No limitations on the number of objections, so at the moment, we have a limitation of 16, but then we report that as a restriction to council. If you accept this recommendation, then there is no limitation on the number of objections. We will deal with the application as, as required.
That's good, I think.
But just to further that, there, that's only one item on this list, there's many more, such as the Fisherman's Bend ones, such as the South Melbourne precinct, they automatically come in, such as, yeah, there's a whole bunch here, so, hmm, that's, thank you. Councillor Brand?
As sort of a discretionary one, like the 16 objectors, or whether it gets called in, those sort of things, actually, there's a, we've got a, what would you say, a sort of protocol or a convention that, that officers will ask councillors, or the CEO will ask councillors on some of these things, so there'd be an informal consultation, and anything, that would be the intention, I imagine, on all of these things, that if there's, if it's possible to do that, that would still, it's not a formal consultation, but it is a conventional thing that we all get asked as much as possible.
So, question, Councillor Brand, will the CEO informally consult with the councillors in the ward on an item? That's contested. Mr Borg?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I can answer that. We will provide information, if this was, if there wasn't a quorum and the CEO was required to make the decision and was delegated to do so, we would provide, as outlined in this report, councillors, the remaining councillors would get, or all councillors could potentially get information, however, would not have a decision-making authority, so we'd be mindful of that in terms of our communication and in terms of governance probity.
Does that answer your question, Councillor Brand?
It does, it does generally. I mean, I just assume that the role of that informal communication, if we're in isolation, we've still got our brains intact, we just can't be there physically, you know, there's a, there's a whole lot of stuff which would be a safety net, an informal safety net, a massive informal safety net which would be there as well.
Okay, any further questions, councillors? Now, oh, Councillor...
Yes, there's some discussion in the body of this report about these delegations being temporary in nature relating to the present state of emergency in relation to coronavirus, and then a little more flexibility in the wording of the recommendation itself, and I just wonder if officers could outline the intent in, when council will review these delegations, should we make them tonight?
Thank you, Ms Bennetts, are you able to answer that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the intent, if council was to pass all or some of these recommendations tonight, would be, they would be in place for only a limited period of time. The intent would be for the period of the state declared emergency. Currently, that emergency is declared through till the 13th of April. The council has an ordinary meeting scheduled for the 15th of April. The intent would be at that meeting, if not before, so the meeting on the 1st of April, or a special meeting if required. We would bring a report back to council with a review about the need to continue, or hopefully the need to no longer need these delegations.
So, just to be clear, that is less than a month? less than a month that you're asking for delegation?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes.
Mr Chick, are you able to speak to the whole group, please? This is in relation to councillor Bond's earlier question around delegations.
Through you, Madam Mayor, there is a particular section in the act in relation to call of the council. So, this is section 85, and it says, if a quorum of a council cannot be formed or maintained due to the absence of councillors, the minister or the CEO may require all councillors to attend a call of the council meeting. So, that's the first part. And the second part says, a call of the council meeting is to be treated as a special meeting. So, it appears from that that if a call of the council is called by the minister or the CEO, and that meeting then would be the same as a special meeting. And I am interpreting as decisions could be made. So, I just wanted to clarify that advice. Not abundantly clear in the act.
It's a little unclear, I understand. councillor Pearl?
No, I was just asking if you could say that one more time, because I didn't quite get it.
Okay. It says, under the topic, call of the council, if a quorum of a council cannot be formed or maintained due to the absence of councillors, the minister or the CEO may require all councillors to attend a call of the council. May require councillors to attend a call of the council meeting. A call of the council meeting is to be treated as a special meeting. So, it's where a quorum cannot be formed or maintained due to the absence of councillors. So, I've always sort of interpreted that as you've got a meeting happening and councillors leave. And then the CEO calls a call of the council to get the councillors back in. So, I, it's not clear, but I just wanted to make sure I'm not giving incorrect advice.
We would need to get legal advice. I've got councillor Gross and then councillor Baxter.
My understanding that was that was written when councillors are playing funny buggers and hamstringing a council and making it non-functioning. And it sort of sounds far too draconian and irrelevant for the situation when councillors are sick. So, through you, Madam Mayor, that was my understanding.
Councillor Baxter?
So, just to clarify, it does, so my understanding of what councillor Bond was saying before was that he believed that, and I may be wrong, so if I'm mischaracterising, then that's just a mistake, but he believed that this section allowed decisions to be made by a normally in-quorate meeting through this measure. But the way you describe it, that doesn't seem to be the case. This seems to be instead a measure to compel councillors to come to a meeting for decision-making, and that quorum doesn't change.
Through you, Madam Mayor. That was my understanding when I replied to councillor Bond, that I didn't know of a situation that he was referring to. I just wanted to double-check this situation, but I don't think it's the same as what we were talking about before councillor Bond. That would be my view.
Councillor Bond?
My understanding is that in the event we can't get quorum for illness or people playing funny buggers, that is there to break the deadlock. It means the minister or the CEO can order a meeting, and every councillor who can turn up does turn up. And that is considered a special meeting of council, whether you have quorum or not. And that is how we can deal with a situation if we were to lose quorum in a traditional sense. It would be a special council meeting that would have the decision-making powers of council, even though you don't have quorum in the room. And that's my reading of that and why that was inserted in there, to break that. Traditionally, it was to break the people-playing funny buggers deadlock, but it would also apply in the circumstances we're talking about here tonight.
I think I understand where you're coming from, so this is not something that we can decide on in terms of the interpretation of the Local Government Act. Ms Bennet, are you able to advise us how we would, you know, get interpretation of this?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I think that council would seek advice from the Office of Local Government Victoria, as well as legal advice. We'd need to defer the item on the agenda today, and we would undertake to do that swiftly. And then we'd look to call a special council meeting at the earliest possible opportunity, would be the way we would need to deal with that matter.
Thank you, Ms Bennet. councillor Brand?
Deferring it would be like a bit of a problem, I would think, just because it could be a, deferring it could be a bit of a problem, because there could be a circumstance that we need this in place in the next few days. But is there a way of maybe if we do want to depend on this advice, that we do what we need to do now, short term, and then for a limited amount of time, and then go and get the advice and confirm or not?
Mr Smith?
Through Madam Mayor, I was going to suggest exactly the same thing, that you, if you're inclined to approve these delegations, that you do so, but instruct me to call, to seek this legal advice urgently, and only give, and set up a special council meeting urgently, and and seek urgent legal advice, and only give me the delegations until I can urgently set up another special council meeting. That would be, I believe, the mechanism to do that, if council were of a mind to do that. Just to clarify those questions.
Councillor Crawford?
Can't we just amend to say that in the case of legal advice, saying that, I don't think it is, but if it was what councillor Bond suggested, then these powers would no longer apply. So, rather than call another meeting, isn't that possible?
I'm going, I think, at this point in time, the CEO suggested, and I think that's a wise idea, let's just adjourn for a few minutes, get our heads together, and then we'll come back and complete the debate. Confer, and I'm just wondering, Mr Smith, are you able to update us on where we got to on that issue?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is now an officer's alt-rec. We think the right thing to do is to clarify for all councillors, councillor Bond's, the issue that councillor Bond previously raised. In effect, what we've done is changed the original officer's recommendation to add a clause 3.8. If you can just bring that up, Sam. There are other changes that are relevant up the top, which are just the minor ones we made before. But I'll read that out if you like, Madam Mayor, or you can, but I think councillors can see it. The effect of that is that we are recommending you pass the delegations above them, or we can go through that at some point. Until such time as I can get legal advice and call a special council meeting or ordinary council meeting, whichever's, I can do at the earliest opportunity. We think that's the right thing to do, so that you're absolutely clear on your legal options. Ms Bennet, did you want to add anything? Sorry, through Madam Mayor.
Ms Bennet?
Through you, Madam Mayor, councillor Bond raised very good questions today, and my view is that the officer's recommendation should rightly go and seek that legal advice. And I think that this is a practical way forward, which balances the need, if there was a decision that needed to be made quickly and urgently in response to the current situation, but ensures that we get good governance advice for council before you make your final decision.
Ms Bennet, may I ask, was there any other changes to this?
Through you, Madam Mayor, just through the earlier recommendations, just being very clear on the timeframe at which they apply, and linking that back to recommendation 3.8. So, stating really clearly that the only reason that this is occurring is because of the COVID-19 state emergency, and being very clear that the time limit is linked back to a special council meeting or the ordinary council meeting. So, in effect, the longest possible time would be two weeks, assuming that we have quorum. We'd be looking to do that as quickly as we possibly can, so that council have certainty.
So, just to be clear, 3.1 had a small alteration, and you've added 3.8. There's been no other text added?
Through you, Madam Mayor, there has been similar adjustments made to 3.4 to reflect to the timeframe, also in 3.5, to reflect the timeframe. And I also believe there was one other, Sam, just up on the first slide. I also understand that planning officers wish to make a small deletion relating to applications of budding the municipality.
Thank you. councillor Crawford, then councillor Baxter?
I'd like to call it to a vote. I think we've had enough time thinking it through.
I'm happy to second.
Can I ask a clarifying question of the motion?
Yes. councillor Pearl, clarifying question?
Just procedurally, do we, and this is an honest question, officers, we haven't moved anything, so you've altered the recommendation, which is actually, I've just answered the question my own head. We haven't moved a motion, so you don't need to do anything. Sorry for wasting council's time.
Thank you. councillor Crawford has put the motion, so.
I also wanted to ask a question. Are we now not able to do that?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. councillor Baxter, can you speak up?
I also wanted to ask a question. Are we now no longer able to do that?
I'll allow a clarifying question, yes?
Okay, sure. I would just, would it require a change to the, that motion for the officers to also bring back to that special or ordinary council meeting the costs to the ratepayers of obtaining that legal advice? Basically, you know, just on transparency?
You can do an, you can amend the motion, if you like.
I'm just asking whether it would require an amendment in order to get those costs brought back?
It would require an amendment to be put in.
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, the officer's recommendation is on the screen. That's the officer's recommendation. It would require an amendment to do that. But at the moment, this is only an officer's recommendation. It requires a mover and seconder, but that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Ms Bennet. So, I have a mover and a seconder now to the officer's recommendation. So, just to be clear, we've got councillor Crawford and councillor Simic has seconded. And we've, so councillor Crawford, would you like to speak to the motion?
I understand everyone's concerns, but this alternative recommendation covers all of the areas, gives us all the contingency, so that we can act in the situation, the extreme situation where we cannot be gathered, the CEO will do the appropriate thing to look after the health and safety of our community and our staff, and that is the delegation we're giving him. And I think that we should get on and vote for it, because it is not anything more than keeping our community. It's our version of a business contingency plan, like everyone else is doing in the community in this extreme times.
Thank you, councillor Crawford. councillor Simic?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councillors. These are unprecedented changes to the way that council operates, but we are living in unprecedented times, and we're adapting as quickly as possible in order to be able to respond. Ultimately, councillor Crawford's right, this keeps our community safe by being able to respond quickly and ensure that we're doing things as appropriately as possible. As a council and through the CEO, we're responsible for over 100,000 people in our municipality, and their safety has to come first. And if that means that at times when council can't gather in really unusual circumstances, then, yes, we should be delegating to our most senior officer to make decisions quickly in order to respond quickly.
Thank you, councillor Simic. councillor Baxter?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment, if I may. Just that, an amendment to the effect that when bringing this legal advice back to whatever council meeting, special or otherwise, that the, in the interest of transparency, that the costs of obtaining that legal advice be disclosed.
So, on a 3.9, when bringing back legal advice, that the costs be transparently disclosed? Happy with that, councillor Baxter?
Yeah.
Do I have a seconder? councillor Bond? councillor Baxter, would you like to speak to the motion?
Oh, just, I think this is a good transparency measure.
councillor Bond? Would anyone else like to speak to the the amendment? Then I'll put that amendment only to the vote. All those in favour? That's carried. So, that now forms part of the substantive motion. Councillor, all those against? That is now part of the substantive motion. Thank you. Now, we were.
Madam Mayor, may I now speak to this motion?
The substantive motion?
As long as I'm in line. Yeah, so I just want to say that it is extraordinary to have to delegate this amount of power. I don't like it. I think that we've been elected to do a job. And what I do like about this motion is that it's very careful to say we're only delegating this power if we become unable to do our job. So, we're only delegating power if we become unable to exercise it. And I think that that seems reasonable. Yeah, that's the best way that we can manage things going forward, and I hope these powers don't have to come about, and that we can continue to exercise our role as councillors.
Thank you, councillor Baxter. Would anyone else like to speak to the substantive motion? councillor Bond?
I won't be supporting this. I think it's been very rushed. We were only told, or I was only told about the meeting yesterday afternoon, we only got the motions this afternoon. I think we've established tonight, we're not sure of the full ramifications of how this will actually work. And there's some, very much a grey area up on the wall in the motion there, so. Yeah, we're not about to lose five councillors to the coronavirus in the next week. There's no reason why we need to rush this. Odds are, we're more likely to lose a CEO than five councillors, and that's the reality here. This is way too rushed. I know we need to make decisions, and I know there's some very tough decisions that need to be made for us. But they need to be considered decisions, not rushed decisions, and I think we're rushing in here. In my opinion, handing over potentially the the authority vested in us by the people of this city to the CEO, which I am not comfortable with, so therefore I'm not going to support this.
Thank you, councillor Bond. Would anyone else like councillor Pearl?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. CEO, I think you're doing the right thing by requesting this. And if I was in your position, I would be planning to do something similar. In my position, the way I feel at the moment is we're not quite ready to do this. And I respect what you've done, and I in no means wish to criticise anything that you're requesting here this evening, because I don't think it's necessarily unreasonable at a certain point in time. And we may not be far from that point in time. But in my assessment of the current situation, we're not quite there. And I don't think any of my colleagues would accuse me of underestimating what's been happening in the past few weeks, or what the problems that we're currently, challenges that we're currently facing. So, I'm respectfully going to vote against it, but that's not to say if it doesn't succeed here this evening, which is probably unlikely, that I wouldn't support this in the future. I just think we're a little bit early. I just think we're a little bit early. And I was constantly back and forth between how I would view voting for this if I was sitting in one of those chairs, viewing the way the council is assessing its decision-making power. And I think, you know, most general people would see the benefits in this. But the principle and foundation in terms of elected government and elected leadership shouldn't be delegated until we're 100% sure that it's absolutely required. And I could be wrong, and I'll be the first to admit I will be wrong, if I am wrong, early next week or even before then, that this was a bad decision if we ran out of time to actually enact this. So I fully understand what you're doing and I think you've organised a group of people around mapping the risks of the organisation appropriately. But from a democratic point of view, in terms of the way council should operate under normal circumstances and even under almost warlike circumstances which we're under, I still think the foundation and the fabric of the Local Government Act and the way the council should operate should remain intact until the last very moment. I understand there's risk with that, but at the moment I'm prepared to take those risks. So respectfully, I'm pretty much just talking to you because there's no one else here and I want you to ensure that you feel that you have the support of your councillors at what must be a very difficult time for you and your team and could be an increasingly more difficult time for our community. So if this gets up this evening, I will hope and trust that you'll exercise your judgement to the best of your ability. But at this point, I won't support giving you that delegation just yet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Pearl. Would anyone else like to speak? Counselor Brand?
Yes, I can see a slight imperfection in this, in this delegation. I can, and I think when I, when I sort of came into my mind and I understood it a bit better, it's something which, it's something which is a small problem with it. But if we want to go to, is this the time for, we're not 100% sure? I'm not 100% sure about it. But is this the time that we need to be 100% sure? I'm not, I don't think so. I think that we can be, you know, perfection is not what's required at the moment. I think practicality trumps perfection at this stage. And I'm happy to be going with this. We do have a second bite at it, to some degree, with this, with this amendment or this change. And, you know, it's something which is like 99%, this is exactly what we need. You know, it's infinitesimally small risk that something would go wrong with this. I would love it to be a model for everybody to use, you know, sort of if we're doing this before other councils, that'd be great. I think it's slightly flawed and I think it's, but it's still totally necessary. So in practical terms, let's do it. I, you know, I cannot foresee that there'd be, I cannot fore, I cannot, I cannot imagine it going wrong, even though I know there is a, you know, a little wormhole there where it could possibly.
Thank you, Counselor Brand. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Would you like to close, Counselor Crawford?
I do think this is a time where no one's 100% sure of anything and I think we have to respond appropriately. I think that this covers all our contingencies and in this situation, everything is changing so rapidly. A week ago, we would not have been thinking we would be closing our borders. There are things happening hour by hour, day by day, and we have to be prepared as a council to respond to them. And time is a risk factor in this pandemic. So I am very happy to support this delegation. I trust our CEO, as he has always done, will make good decisions on behalf of the community and the staff. And it would be remiss of us as a council to not put this in place like every other business and organisation in the country to deal with the high-risk situation we are in. Please God, it doesn't come to that and that everyone remains healthy and safe and our various services can continue to be provided. But in the instance where there is a need, I want our CEO to be in the position to make the delegation that will keep people safe. So let's, I'm actually quite worked up about this. I think we have to, we talk about being agile and then when it comes to it, there's debate. This has lots of backups in it. It's only in case of that emergency. But guess what? We are in a situation, the world is in a situation of emergency. And although we need to stay calm and look out for each other and be kind, we also have to be realistic. Please, councillors, support this motion.
Thank you, Counselor Crawford. I will now put that to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? That motion has carried and Counselor Bond has requested a division. So councillors, I'll ask you to vote again. All those in favour? Counselor Copsy, Counselor Simic, Counselor Brand, Counselor Voss, Counselor Gross, Counselor Crawford, Counselor Baxter. All those against? Counselor Pearl and Counselor Bond. That motion has carried. Now, that's the end of the items for tonight. There being no further business, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.